Call or order to the Towns of Hillsborough Planning Board, May 12th meeting, 2016, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This meeting has been duly advertised according to the Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 sunshine law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yeah.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hestag.
Here.
Ms. Beccarina.
Here.
Ms. Forrest.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Here.
And Chairman Lapone.
Here. First order business would be the deposition of the minutes dated May 5th, 2016, which would be in your packet.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Wagner, yourself, Mr. Hestag, Ms. Beccarina, and Ms. Forrest.
I'll move to accept him.
I will second that.
Roll call.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Beccarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Chairman Lapone.
Yes. Next order, we have disposition of resolutions, which I do believe there are none. Planning Board business. I don't believe there's any. Any committee reports? None, okay. Any business from the floor at this time that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Consideration of ordinances, which we do not have any. Okay. That was the first six, very quickly. All right, so our first up will be, for public hearing, will be Hillsborough Realty LLC, reference Weisman Enterprises LLC, 04 PB 25 MJ, file 16 PB 05 RES, Block 175 17, Lot 1505, formerly known as Block 175, Lot 15, prior to subdivision, one Danbury Court. Applicant requesting amendment to the original subdivision approval, Resolution 04 PB 25 MJ, dated 5/12/05 for Block 175, Lot 15, as to the finding of fact which read to the existing house would remain. The new owner is proposed to demolish the existing house and replace it with a new one within the previously approved building envelope with no variances on the property in the R Residential Zoning District. Counselor?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, and members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linnis, and I'm pleased to represent Hillsborough Realty LLC. The chairman, in sum and substance, did read what the application's all about. Back in 2005, this board granted a five-lot residential subdivision. The owner of the property at the time said he wanted to create four new building lots, but he wanted to rent out the existing house. The new owner is the developer here tonight, and he's under contract to sell the house with the existing lot, but his contract requires the demolition of the house and the construction of a new home. It will be beneficial in that a new home is usually more attractive than an existing home, and we're here tonight to get relief from that finding of fact. Certainly, the finding of fact back in 2005 did not mean that the house would stay there forever. So basically, that's the sum and substance of the application, and we respectfully request your approval.
Eric?
Any witnesses, Mr. Linnis? Are you?
No, but I do have the developer here, but...
Why don't you bring him up?
Okay. Felice.
By the way, would you clear the mic again, please?
Has he been sworn in?
No. Raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
State your full name, spelling your last name.
Felice Tang, T-A-N-G-A.
Spell your first name, please.
F-E-L-I-C-E.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tang, you're a representative of Hillsborough Realty LLC, are you not?
Yes.
And you're the owner, Hillsborough Realty is the owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay, and you're now under contract to sell the lot in question? Is that correct?
Yes.
And under your contract, you're required to deliver a home on or about September 1st of this year?
Yes.
All right, and you're asking this board to amend and delete a finding of fact way back in 2005 that said at the time that the then-owner was going to keep the house intact and rent it out or do whatever. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and you're asking this board to give you that relief so you can get a demolition permit, hopefully pull it tomorrow, and start getting it, demolishing the house and building the house, consistent with the zoning ordinance? You're not looking for any variances or setback variances or any bulk variances, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Have no further questions.
Anyone from the board? Any questions? I have a question. When you purchased, I'm assuming you purchased the property from another owner?
I said that. From Weisman Realty.
And you knew at the time of this ordinance that the house was in this ordinance, was it not to be torn down?
Uh...
Well, according to what finding of fact, I guess you're saying that you're buying it, that the original had kept it the way it was on purpose and was not going to develop it?
Actually, the previous owner, they rented the house. We never rented the house. We just keep it vacant. We kept it vacant for the past, I believe, nine years.
Okay. Am I closer?
Okay.
And I guess you've entered into a contract to demolish this house without asking the permission for us to even do that yet. Is that correct?
Um, I did.
Well, it's no viol...
Well, I guess he's asking for permission, and you're asking us to expedite this decision, yet you've already tried to promise this to someone already. Is that correct?
Well, first of all, Mr. Chairman, the finding of fact, we wouldn't be here other than there's a standard condition in all resolutions saying that all findings of fact are conditions of the approval.
Okay.
Certainly, I don't think the board would frustrate the ability of someone, there's no reason to keep the existing house in existence.
All right.
And he's not violating anything.
I just was trying to get at the timeline here that you had...
No, technically, he is, Mr. Linnis. The condition, the finding of fact which became a condition, was that the prior approval was based upon four new lots and the current dwelling.
And my question is, does that mean that that house has to remain there forever?
No, but the point is, he's now here asking the board to amend the resolution...
Which is our request, that's correct.
Which is your request. And I think what the chairman's question is, was he aware at the time of the purchase of the property that there was a condition within the purchase that involved the house being, remaining in its current condition?
Yes, I did, but not that we could not knock down the home.
Sir, could you just speak into the microphone?
I did know that, but we didn't know that we could knock down our own home. And at this time, the home has been empty for about nine years, and it's right across the street, and we'd just like to demolish the house and build a new home.
On the current... In the, on the current footprint of the existing home?
Use the, turn, flip the other mic if you can, because I think the mic turned off there, so.
Yeah, this existing home is not even on the building envelope, I believe, that is filed with the county and the township, the home that we are going to demolish.
You're going to build the new home where the existing home is?
On the same building lot.
So not necessarily on the same footprint, but on the same lot?
On the same lot. It's a one-acre lot.
If the board grants you the approval, would it be consistent with the other four homes in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. Consistent with the other four lots in the subdivision?
Yes.
Would it meet all the requirements of the setbacks in the zone and for the lot?
Yes.
Anything? Okay. We have a motion for this application for...
Motion to open to the public.
Motion to open public, excuse me.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone from the floor have any questions for the testimony just given on this property? And this testimony only? Okay, seeing none. Motion to close?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have for an application to demolish a house and build a house instead, consistent with the other homes within this subdivision, requiring no variances as far as setback or anything else. Is that correct, Counselor?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Linnis, what's the status of the taxes?
We were advised this afternoon that the second quarter was due owing. The second quarter was due on May 1st. I called my client immediately, and he ran down to the tax authority, and I have a receipt for the taxes in my hand, and I'd be glad to provide this to the board.
Please provide a copy for me.
We were noticed at about 3:00 this afternoon.
Appreciate his, well, it was across the street, so it was close.
You've got to pay your second quarter property taxes. Hillsborough needs the money. He ran down, made the payment.
Well, if you want a permit, it takes money, right? All right.
And by the way, for the record, it was $950 or thereabouts.
Okay. Okay, David?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion for this application?
I'll move this application for Weisman Enterprises LLC, 04 PB MJ, now known as Hillsborough Realty LLC, file 16 PB 06.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Ms. Beccarina.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
And Chairman Lapone.
Yes. All right, thank you very much, Counselor. Okay, Felice.
Okay. Next up is Meadowbrook of Hillsborough. Bear with me, it's a relatively long paragraph. File 16 PB 02 MJ SR, Block 163.05, lots 101, 102, 103, 104, and 105. Proposed lots 101.01 and Lot 101.02 after subdivision. Proposed Lot 101.02, subject of application. Currently, 495 Amwell Road, Lot 101, Q Farm, Amwell Road, Lot 102, 503 Amwell Road, Lot 103, 505 Amwell Road, Lot 104, and 507 Amwell Road, Lot 105. Advocate seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval, preliminary and final major site plan approval, relief from maximum tract area for a single-family dwelling, identified and hardship waiver for the tree preservation ordinance to preserve proposed Lot 101.02, 17.166 acres into 46 lots. Forty-four lots for single-family detached homes, one multifamily lot, 2.49 acres, to construct 30 multifamily townhomes situated within three buildings, and one open space lot, 6.06 acres, to contain the stormwater basin, and all necessary parking, roadways, utilities, and improvements on property in the ARW Amwell Road West Zoning District. This project is governed by the subdivision of the new Amwell redevelopment plan. Revised plan submitted 4/15/16. Subdivision deeds filed 4/18/16 for lots 101.01 and 101.02. EC reviews dated 4/25/16 and 5/23/16.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linnis, and I'm pleased to represent Kay Hobnanian tonight. Kay Hobnanian is the contract purchaser of the property that, for which we're seeking approval. The project would be known as Meadowbrook at Hillsborough. Tonight, we're not going to get into the technical aspects of the application. We would like to give the board a broad overview, board and the public, a broad overview of what the project consists of, and then we would return at a later date to make the presentation of our experts. Initially, by way of introduction and background for those persons who are here, and persons who are here tonight, prior to 2014, the Township Committee undertook a preliminary investigation as to whether a study area for these lots, Block 163.05, lots 101, 102, 103, 104, and 105, would be appropriate to be designated as an area in need of rehabilitation. As a result of that, CME Associates was retained by the Township to prepare that study, and they did prepare a redevelopment plan for this property back in October of 2014. It went to the planning board, and the planning board in December of 2014 adopted the redevelopment plan and recommended it to the Township Committee. The Township Committee then in 2015, in April of 2015, officially approved the redevelopment plan, and by way of an ordinance that was adopted by the Township on May 21st, excuse me, adopted on May 12th, 2015, it created the ordinance which governs the use and development of this property. Some of you board members may recall that the first section of this property, there was an application back in June of 2015 from RPM. RPM was the developer of the front portion of this property, three acres of the 20 acres, and they received the approval of the board for a subdivision as well as a site plan. Kay Hobnanian is the contract purchaser and will hopefully be the developer of the remaining piece, the 17 acres, and we're going to be seeking preliminary and final subdivision approval, together with preliminary and final site plan approval. I have just one witness tonight, and that's David Fisher from Kay Hobnanian. He's a vice president of Kay Hobnanian, and we'd like to make a presentation to the board and the public on an overview situation.
Okay, can you swear, Mr. Fisher?
I'll swear. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. State your full name, spelling your last name.
Need the mic?
David Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and Vice President of Governmental Affairs with Cabnanian Homes, Edison, New Jersey.
You can sit down again and use the other mic, please.
Okay, Dave, what is your company's relationship with the property owner?
We are, as you said, contract purchasers.
All right, hold on. Can you make sure that's on? Hit the button till it's green?
On now?
Good, thank you.
Sorry. We're contract purchasers, have been since August 11th, 2014. So we've been working with the property owner and also with RPM to coordinate engineering work and the applications that are before the township.
All right, can you provide a brief overview of the property in question, as well as the redevelopment designation and the adopted zoning plan that now applies to the property?
I think actually you did a pretty good job. You summarized the property in question. When we submitted the application, it was still divided into those five lots. What's occurred since then, and it's just been recently, on April 18th, 2016, RPM recorded the deed that created the two new lots, which was part of their approval. So it created the 3.4 and change acre parcel for their development, and it created a remainder parcel of about 17.17 acres for the balance of the development, which is the subject of our application. RPM will be developing, as you know, affordable housing units in support of the town's Mount Lowell Compliance Plan, 54 units, 14 of which will be reserved for special needs housing. I think what's interesting or unique is that we're also supporting the town's affordable housing plan in that it requires us to pay an in-lug contribution of 1% of the assessed value of each home. So in addition to the units that are being built by RPM, we'll also be providing funds for the township's Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Okay. Can you explain the difference between this development application and the one processed by RPM Development Company last year?
Sure. They had a simple site plan application with two buildings, and they established a main entrance road right through the center of the development to ultimately connect to a street that would become part of our development. So I think I just kind of described the scope of what they're proposing. As I said, we've been working with them so that we'll have a cross-access easement on that access road, because we will share that access road with them, and I'll point out to the board in a second, on the site plan, a secondary access as well.
Okay. All right, I'd like you to display some of your exhibits. We've pre-marked and have handouts of six exhibits, and we also have board displays of the exhibits. Yes, it's been pre-marked, and he'll identify the exhibits as we go along.
Yeah, I marked the handout exhibit A1. Not that anything isn't already provided by the following exhibits, they're all the same except for the cover. So the 11-by-17 color handout is A1.
First page in your packet, and we're marking it as Exhibit A1, is the display board. You want to identify that, please?
Sure. This is called a general location map. It's an aerial photograph of the general vicinity on which we have superimposed a site plan rendering of not only our development, but we wanted to also show the two buildings to be developed by RPM in the front, because it's really integral to the overall community that will be developed here. So this is marked A2, and it shows the property which, through RPM's site, has franchise along Amwell Road, west of Raider Boulevard, and it's adjacent to the courtyard at Amwell Office Complex to the east, vacant home office occupation property to the west, and several apartment and condominium developments kind of surrounding the property to, further to the west, north, and east. Renate Drive is an unimproved right-of-way. It services that complex, but it also provides a right-of-way that comes right to our property. We don't intend to create any vehicular access to Renate Drive, but New Jersey American Water has a water line in that and has asked us to consider looping the water in that location, and our plans reflect that. So this is kind of an overall picture. The Royce Brook Tributary is kind of along the northern boundary of the property. It's a tributary of the Royce Brook that kind of moves from west to east, and associated with that, of course, are wetlands regulated by the NGDEP, as well as a flood hazard area that is regulated by the Delaware Road and Canal Commission, and pursuant to a stream Carter buffer that the Township of Hillsborough has. Moving along, this is an enlargement of the site plan.
And what's the identification of that exhibit?
This is A3, and it just says subdivision and site plan rendering. Again, here are the two buildings proposed by RPM. By the way, if I didn't mention it, they just closed with the property owner last week. So they have, I believe, all of their approvals. They're ready to go, and they will probably start construction in the not-too-distant future. Here's their main access road between the two buildings. They've got parking that services it behind those buildings. And then our development begins here. So we have a roadway that runs east-west and then loops around, creating an opportunity for the subdivision of lots. The redevelopment plan called for up to 45 single-family lots and 30 three-story townhomes, and our application reflects that, except we're one less lot. We're 44 lots, not 45. So the subdivision would be created. That's the subdivision portion of the application. The site plan portion of the application is where the townhomes are, and then there's a totlot play area located next to one of the townhomes with benches and bike racks and those types of things. As you can see, there's a stormwater basin that's up in kind of the northeastern portion of the property, because that's the lowest part of the site, and we've designed what will be a wet pond in accordance with the statewide stormwater management regulations. Overall density of the project, it's around four units per acre for the single-family homes, about 12 units per acre just for the site plan for the 30 townhomes, so, but on an overall basis, it's less than 4 and 1/2 homes per acre.
And is that density consistent with the redevelopment plan and the ordinance?
It is. When the chairman read the notice, there's one potential issue that we need to address, which is the area assigned to single-family homes. Depending on how you measure it, we think we comply, but what's stated on our plans, it's over the maximum. So other than that, we meet all of the bulk standards, all the density standards, and we're not seeking any variances or waivers from those. The architecture, I'll just run through very quickly. I know this is an overview, but the next three exhibits are just illustrations. We submitted 32...
And the exhibit you're displaying is what exhibit?
I'm sorry, it's A4.
And what does it represent?
This represents the Haddonfield model, and there are four single-family homes proposed that range in size from about 2,250 square feet up to about 2,900 square feet, this being about 2,400 square feet. And all the homes are just a hair under 40 feet wide. They fit well on the lots within the setbacks, and, you know, they're varying depths, but we think that it would create a nice opportunity for modest-sized housing in the town, and here's the largest model.
This is...
A5, called the Brookdale, and that's the one that gets up to 2,933 square feet. So that's just, gives you kind of a flavor of the combination of elevations that we do. Normally, when we build single-family homes like this, we have at least two, sometimes three, different elevation options, so someone can pick a more colonial theme versus kind of a craftsman or a traditional architecture, and we move around some of the gables and roof lines so that they create differences. And lastly, the townhomes, and this is, all these are supported by a set of plans. We submitted 32 sheets of architectural plans that we provided to the township as part of the application. And this is A6, the last exhibit. This is the...
What is A6, Dave?
A6 is what I would call a perspective rendering of the three-story townhouse building. And this is the eight-unit building, which is located right here, up on that first corner. So a stacked townhouse is a little different than what you might be used to, accustomed to in a traditional two-story townhouse. It gets you a little higher density. Each home has a one-car garage and a single wide driveway, but within each kind of component of this, there's four components to this townhouse building. They're 26 feet wide. There are two townhomes in that width. One is, has the living on the first level, and then partial, there are bedrooms on half of the second level, and then the upper unit, you walk up to your living space, and then your bedrooms are on the third floor. It's not for everyone, but we find that young singles, couples, and, you know, those that are not looking for a tremendous amount of square footage, the lower unit is about 1,600 square feet, the upper around 2,100 square feet. Two bedrooms on the bottom, three bedrooms on the top. So those are kind of an overview or illustration of the architectural designs. And then...
All right, now, and common areas in a homeowners' association. Can you describe the common areas associated with the proposed subdivision and the responsibility of a homeowners' association that would be formed to own and maintain these features?
Absolutely. The common areas are a little unusual for this type of a development. You would think with a single-family subdivision, the roads would be public streets, but these will not be. They'll be private streets. And the reason...
So even within the single-family component, they'll be private streets. Is that correct?
That's correct. We talked to the town about this even before we made the application, and they felt that because none of our streets connect directly to a public right-of-way, we couldn't establish, you know, public right-of-ways that are isolated from other public streets. So they will all be designed in accordance with the RSIS requirements, 28 feet wide, sidewalks on both sides, but they will be established within a street line that becomes part of the association's responsibility to maintain, and we have to create reserves for the ultimate repair and replacement of those streets, along with other portions or components of the open space. And that would include all of the common area landscaping, the totlot play area, the benches, the bicycle racks, the storm drainage basin. So the basin would be maintained, owned and maintained by the homeowners' association. There would be an operation and maintenance manual that would go along with that, and I know that the town would, you know, requires us to adhere to all the current requirements for how to maintain a wet pond. So I think that's pretty much an overview of what the associate... So, I think that's pretty much an overview of what the association would require. We would set up a public offering statement. As part of this, it will have two components, so the master deed will describe the single-family homes as well as the townhomes, you know, with the required bylaws and budget and reserves that are necessary to establish a community like this.
All right, and out of the 17 acres, how much would be devoted to open space?
The open space, I think, is about 35% of the site, about six, a little over six acres. So, I mean, the vast majority of that is along the back of the property. You know, much of that is wooded, essentially all of it's wooded, some less so than other pockets. I walked the site, in fact, I walked the site with the environmental commission just Saturday, last Saturday. So, there's, if you looked at an aerial photograph of the property, I would say a good third of the property is already vacant. It was farmed many, many years ago, like everything else in Hillsborough, and some of it has grown back, so it's mainly successional growth and pines and things like that. But, we are going to have to do some tree clearing, and we need to talk to your planning department about how to approach the tree mitigation requirements.
All right, can you tell us, Dave, where the application stands in relationship to the township's review, as well as other regulatory agencies?
Certainly. We've received, reviewed four different review letters, one from the town's fire marshal, one from the planning director, David Maske, one from the environmental commission. We met with the environmental commission on April 25th, and then, we had a site visit on April 30th, and then after which, they issued a report dated May 6th. So, we're reviewing that, and then, lastly, the conflict engineer, CME Associates, issued their report on May 6th as well, and we've begun to go through that, so that we can address all of the comments that are contained in that report.
All right, in addition to the planning board jurisdiction and approval from the planning board, are there other agencies that will be looking at our application and making a determination as to whether they, it requires an approval?
Certainly. There's the Hillsborough MUA to review and approve the sanitary sewer, you know, which then has to go to DEP for treatment works approval, so there's two levels of review of the sewer. The Delaware Road and Canal Commission, as I mentioned before, has to review and approve our stormwater management plan and our development along the flood hazard area. Somerset County Planning Board has jurisdiction over this application because of the subdivision and site plan requirements. Somerset Union Soil Conservation District, and we've made submissions to all of these agencies. And lastly, NJDEP, we haven't applied for everything at DEP just yet, but we applied for flood hazard verification, so that we can pinpoint the location of the flood hazard area along the stream. There's already a stream delineation by FEMA along that tributary, but DEP's jurisdiction is a little bit different, so we will...
Okay, I have no further questions?
Not at this time of this witness.
Okay. Brian?
Mr. Chairman, based upon the fact that the testimony is pretty much general in nature, Mr. Fisher didn't really delve into our report in any great depth, I don't think it's appropriate right now for me to comment. I'll withhold comment until such time as more substantial testimony has been provided.
Okay.
I would like to add a couple of comments, if I would.
Sure.
This obviously is going to take more than one hearing. Mr. Fisher laid out the various reports he's received, and in total, there are quite a number of comments and questions regarding the application. We would appreciate it if the applicant could revise the plans as needed, particularly as called out in CME's report, to answer some of the questions ahead of time, and to allow us to perhaps issue revised reports on this application, so that we don't leave all the questions till the end.
I agree.
Secondly, as was mentioned...
Yes, and we have no objection to that. As a matter of fact, we're, I think we've scheduled a meeting with the engineer to discuss issues.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. I spoke with the applicant's engineer just today, I believe, and we're scheduled to meet with them tomorrow to try to chip away at some of the more technical aspects of the comments in our reports.
Okay.
Just one other thing, before it gets by, as it was mentioned, this is governed by the redevelopment plan. The applicant will be required to enter into what is called a redevelopers agreement with the township through the township committee. Those documents are being prepared presently. They will need to go to the township committee, and obviously to K. Hovnanian as well, to come to an agreement. That agreement really ought to be in place prior to this board making a final decision, barring that you could condition any decisions you make on the finalization of that plan. However, as I said, those agreements are being prepared now, depending on the schedule as it plays out for future hearings. Ideally, that redeveloper agreement would be finalized and signed by both parties prior to this board making a final decision.
Thank you, David. All right, any questions from the board?
Hi. The first thing I was wondering about was the potential impact on surrounding roads and neighborhoods and like where the traffic would go. So I think Comment did say that we know other roads that lead to, like towards other roads. Everything, I think, came out towards Amwell Road?
That's correct.
So is that just one road, and can that sustain the traffic of all the people that would be living in there?
Well, according to our traffic engineer, it can. We submitted a traffic report. I'm not that expert, but we'll hear testimony from the firm of Dolan and Dean. They also did the traffic report for the project in the front. So, they're familiar with the site and the characteristics of the area, but I believe they can demonstrate that there is adequate, you know, timing and levels of service to get vehicles in and out of the site.
Would that potentially consider a light to have to be put at that corner?
Not in their opinion, no. They didn't come to that conclusion.
But the board, we'll hear extensive testimony from our traffic consultant, and we've already filed the traffic impact statement. Sam?
Just a clarification. I took a walk back in this area, and you kind of get lost back there. I know there's an old cemetery back there. Is that on your property or beside yours?
I'm not aware of a cemetery. When I did the walk with the two members of the environmental commission, we didn't come across anything. It doesn't mean it's not possible. We can talk to the owners to see if they're aware of anything where there's a cemetery. If there is, I'm sure it's way back in the woods somewhere.
Yeah, it's back in the woods there to the, I'm thinking, looking at the map here, it would be the north...
East.
...east corner.
Or over toward Renee Drive?
Correct.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
When you come back, clarify that, please.
Sure.
The second thing is, I saw, you know, you had a wetlands study done, but did not get the report on that.
That's still...
Yeah, the environmental commission had asked us to clarify that as well. What's a little unusual is the property owners secured freshwater wetlands LOIs for different parts of the property. They did it for three lots, and then they did it for two lots. One was about to expire, so they renewed that one, and a recent LOI was issued, but again, just for those two lots. We're going to have to extend or renew the other one, probably the middle of this year. So, yeah, there are two LOIs that established the wetlands for the property, and we can provide, you know, copies of the maps and the letters.
Very good. Dr. Merle?
Yes, regarding the, I think it's the office complex to the east, and the access off of Amwell Road. So there's a right-of-way from that onto the private road? That's correct?
There's an access easement that that owner granted to the owner of this property to be able to use his driveway to get access to the site, yes.
Are there going to be, do you believe there will be any modifications necessary to that access in order to handle the traffic to the development?
I don't think so. I mean, it covers their driveway from Amwell Road all the way back to where we would connect to it, and it's actually drawn, you know, there's a diagram of it, and it's shown on our survey, and that document was, you know, recorded back in April of 2005. So, I think, I think it covers everything that we would need to access, just from the point at which our east-west roadway intersects with their parking lot and then moves out to the front.
Right. Yeah, we just want to make sure that that's very clear at the time of the application, because it's an unusual setup, you know, and there's going to be a concern also exiting left-hand turns with the volume of traffic, because we have a significant volume with the buildings up front, then, you know, the volume from the rest of the community, and there's always a concern with cross, you know, cross-turning.
Gotcha, okay. We'll remind our traffic expert.
Right, and that will be addressed by our traffic consultant when it comes in.
Yeah, right, sure. Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up.
And we appreciate the input.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I would just add to that, thinking about Pleasant View across the street...
Yeah.
Coming out of Annavan Park, that's a busy street. So, you put the two together, that could increase the danger.
That actually came up, I think, with the original application for the buildings in the front, was the distance between Pleasant View and that center access between the buildings that was addressed. But, now we have a greater volume and more potential left-hand turns.
Okay, so noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just talking in generalities about the homeowners' association's responsibilities, that'll also include, you know, street lighting, the cost of maintaining, and...
I believe so. I don't, I don't know whether we got street lighting approved by JCPN L here or no.
I think the association...
Yeah, I believe so. Sometimes we can, you know, towns will accept streetlights, you know, as long as they fit the normal BSENG or JCPN L model, but if not, they'll be privately owned and maintained.
Okay, and also the fire hydrants?
Fire hydrants, usually we see the town, the water department, or, you know, whether it's an MUA or a private water company. I think New Jersey American will want to maintain jurisdiction over the hydrants.
Well, what it is, is there's a cost associated with those. They'll maintain them, but there's a payment.
They charge you.
There's a yearly charge for those, so...
We'll look into that.
Okay.
Those are the types of items that can be covered in the redeveloper agreement. The town will lay out who's paying for what, who's maintaining for what, so there'll be no questions after that.
Okay.
All right, now we'll motion to open to public.
So, Lou?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, so we have questions for this public. Now remember, this is just in general what the testimony was today. There will be another meeting when the experts will come in and answer more detailed questions that you may have. So remember, the questions need to be based on the testimony and this witness, what he can testify to. So, we, I'm not going to say you can't come up, but just remember, that's what he can answer, so not to frustrate anybody. So first, we'll start on the left over here, the young man that had his hand in the back.
My name is Joe Cosu...
Come up to the front, please. Come up to the front to the microphone and say your name for the record and ask your question.
First of all, thank you for calling me a young man. My name is Joe Cosu. I'm one of the property owners of the...
Can you state your address? Your address, please.
134 Volvers Drive, Branchburg, New Jersey. I've owned the property for over 20 years. The graveyard is not on the property. Absolutely not.
Wanted to clarify that.
Spell your last name, sir?
C-U-S-U-M-A-N-O.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the left side? Come up. We'll start with the back, if we can, and come up there. Go ahead. All right, should give it to you.
Hi.
State your name and address.
Jennifer Lestella.
Say your last name.
It's L-A-S-T-E-L-L-A.
And address.
It's 299 Gemini Drive.
Okay.
I just have a question. You said that the...
Speak into the mic, please, but I know it's kind of...
You said that the area that you're working with is like 30-something acres?
It's 20, 20 acres. 20.9 acres is the total.
And the percentage you're going to keep is what?
Well, the 20 acres is the entire property. 17 is what we're developing with this application. So of the 17 acres, we're developing all but six acres of it. So six acres are roughly 35% of the property.
Now, is that considered the open space between the properties? Is that the six acres, is that...
No, no.
Is that all of that?
No, it's just the open space along the stream and where our detention basin is.
Okay, and that stream is, you guys have taken that into consideration, because it does flood?
Yes.
Like, I live on Gemini, like right back to that stream, and it does, that water comes right up, almost to the condos.
Behind us, yeah. Well, I know some of your units are fairly close to the stream.
And how close are your units going to be to the condos back up to Gemini?
Well, we're on the total opposite side of the stream, but I would say, Ray, do you have any rough idea how close we are to the stream or the nearest condominium units?
You can't have it testified.
No? Okay.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, after the meeting, I can, you know, scale it from our plans.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
And we'll have some testimony at the next meeting with the civil engineer, so I can give you more detailed answers.
Yeah, I'll do that, then.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Fisher, could you just, it might be helpful if you go up to the exhibit and just point out where the property line is at the rear?
Sure.
Where your backyard's end on the houses and where the property line actually is?
Yeah. The property line on the exhibit in your handouts and here is shown by this heavier dark dash line, black dash line. So it runs all the way up here, barely hit it, but there's, essentially, it runs along the stream way back here. Here's the condominium units that we're not, you know, the stream, our property, is fairly close to, but of course, we're not doing anything there. We're creating more of, you know, a distance between the stream and our homes, and it follows all the way into this corner here and then comes back on this route.
So if you, the six acres you're referring to are those, the non-colorized portion in the rear and to the side where you have the blue detention basin, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Is that better?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure, come on. Come back to the mic, please.
So I just have one other question. You said that, is there like a town ordinance, and you guys probably would know, because this is my first time ever to one of these meetings, is there an ordinance that says certain amount of property has to be saved? Like, I mean, he said a lot of it's already open space. So, does that count in the variance of saying, hey, well, Hillsborough has an ordinance saying we have to keep a certain amount of property? Is that implied in that, like with the open space that's already there? Or are they just saying, okay, it's whatever, how many acres, we're just going to take it down to 30%? What's the 30%?
There are requirements for setbacks and buffers regarding neighboring properties and the homes within the lots themselves. There is no specific ordinance that says that every property in the township must have X percent of open space.
But I mean, as far as for development, he's saying he's keeping a certain amount of percentage of that property...
That's what's set forth in the zoning ordinance relative to this development.
Okay.
And just to, if I can maybe add to that, which may help answer your question. In addition to that, there is also, there are also environmentally constrained areas associated with that stream back there...
Right.
...in which the developer can't build. So that in and of itself, those environmental restrictions are going to limit the amount that they can and will and do limit the amount of development that they can have.
Okay, I'm just worried about the overflow of that water with the building, if it's going to affect my condo, like with the water rising.
I can tell you that, I'm sure that their engineer is going to provide substantial testimony on that. Myself and my office have reviewed it, and when that testimony comes, I'm sure you'll be here to hear, and hopefully that will satisfy your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. On the left again. Sir, you had a question? Yeah?
This is your buddy. You haven't had the pleasure yet. Where's Gemini? Which is Gemini? Back here. Yeah, I thought so. Amadeo Di Adamo.
Say your last name.
I'm just at 913 Renee Drive, Unit 4.
Could you spell your last name, sir, please?
Yes. D apostrophe A, D-A-M-O.
Sure. Your question?
First of all, since I live on Renee Drive, is there any access from this development to Renee, any of the roadway of Renee Drive?
No, we will not connect to your development directly, not.
Okay. The second is, you asked for relief from the 20% clear-cut area, and according to what is here, it indicates that you could clear-cut the whole of the property. Is that correct?
I think we'll have testimony from our landscape architect on that issue.
Yeah, there'd be more for the...
And it may not be, you know, suitable for me to respond, but there is a tree mitigation ordinance in town, and we're going to have to address how we comply.
Okay.
You know, there are ways to deviate from a strict application of that, and we may talk to the professionals in the town about that.
Okay, thank you. And then... And then, that property was originally a, in part, originally a graveyard. Is that correct?
Not according to what the owner just said. I don't know. You know, we've only been under contract for the last two years. Mr. Cosmano, who came up and testified, said that the gravestones that were referred to by one of the board members are not on his property.
Not on that property. But that would probably have to be confirmed, right?
I suppose we can. You know, maybe send out someone to, to, you know, identify by GPS where those gravestones are located. You know, I hate to spend a lot of money on survey crews to find gravestones that aren't on our site, but I guess there's a way to confirm that.
Okay. And then I want to ask, since I live on Renate Drive, part of the property there abuts very close to where I live. Now, that is an area that's very heavily treed and clear-cutting of any sort really impacts on the people who live on Renate Drive. Can you give us some assurance that you'll have as little chopping down of the very wonderful trees in that abuts of the property of Clamont Hills?
Well, I think what we can do is, you gave us your address. We'll look to see where your unit is located, and maybe at the next hearing, we can come back and say and describe for you what parts of the site nearest your home are being cleared versus not being cleared. It kind of depends on where you're located because some of those, you know, buildings go pretty far back. They're adjacent to open space and some are not.
Okay. Have you some estimate, having the design and design of the buildings, do you have some estimate of the number of children who will be coming into our school system?
We do. In fact, we prepared a community impact statement, which is required by the town. It was done by Richard Redding Associates, and he will, I believe, be testifying at one of the subsequent hearings, but his findings are already concluded. That report submitted. I don't have it in front of me, but yes, there's an estimate of school-aged children.
Well, what concerns me is the design of some of the buildings as three-story buildings where you have four bedrooms. Now, with four bedrooms, we can anticipate at least two children.
Sir, are you going to testify? Because if you're going to testify, we're going to have to swear you in.
I'm sorry.
Are you going to testify or are you going to ask a question?
Well, I asked the question as to whether there was some idea of how many schoolchildren would be added to our, in our town.
And I believe the witness indicated that there is a community impact statement that's been provided as part of the record, that the applicant intends to produce expert testimony regarding same. And so my question is, if you're going to make a statement relative to his limited testimony on this, you're going to have to be sworn in because you're giving evidence.
Okay. Well, not my intention to make a statement. I just was concerned about the number of children who will be added to our school system and the fact that the design of some of the buildings was such that, rather unusual, such that you ended up with four-bedroom.
Now, you're testifying, sir, so, and frankly, I believe the testimony of the applicant was it was three-bedroom units, not four. But if you wish to place testimony on the record, then we'll have you sworn in.
No, that's quite all right. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the left side? Come on up.
Lorraine Chambers, 673 Dover Court, Hillsboro. My question is, the property that's to the west between the new units and the condominiums, who owns that and is there, are there plans for future development?
I couldn't tell you offhand who owns them. They're listed on our engineering sheets because we have to list all the property owners within 200 feet, and we're not aware of any plans to develop those at this juncture. They're zoned for home-office occupation.
Home-office occupation.
So they could, they could have an office in their home, they could build a bigger building and call it a home occupation. You know, it all depends on the board's review of those plans.
But there's nothing in the plans that you know of?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the left side? Okay, the right side.
Susan Gullough, Fort Hunt Club Road. Oh, I have one quick question on the tot lot. Is that being shared with the RPM properties in the front?
No, it's not proposed to be.
Okay. I didn't notice any other tot lots, and there's going to be 54 apartments there, so. I have questions on your, your two private access, the easements. The professional building parking lot is basically your, your secondary exit from the development. So you're going to be using a, a parking lot aisle as a driveway? Are the, are you going to be using the parking lot aisle as a driveway and are the requirements different for a parking lot aisle than a driveway across access easement?
May need either our traffic engineer or our design engineer to talk to that issue because I don't know the width of that access drive. I know it's not narrow, but whether it rises to the level of a street, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and the assumption is you're calling it an aisle.
Yeah.
Well, that's an assumption, you know, that it's, on the plan, it's not an aisle.
Okay.
Okay, it's a street. Okay, you got to, it's all in perspective, you know, of the dimension.
I'll have to take a drive through the professional.
And I had the same question before, I was, similar concern with the other access. So that'll all be demonstrated with the, I think, with the engineers, but it's, it's not, it's definitely not an aisle.
It's not a common parking lot?
Right.
That we're looking at?
As you can see, it's, it's separated from the parking-
Okay.
-east and west of it.
Okay, because I was also wondering about the loss of parking spaces in the professional building, but that'll come up with professionals.
That's more for the application.
This, this questions really are just for the testimony that he gave on the generic signs, the building lots, the design, the buildings, et cetera. There'll be more professional testimony brought at the next meeting where all these specific questions will be brought on and be answered.
Okay, the single-family homes that are proposed, they are going to be four-bedroom, correct?
They are. That's correct.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure it was clear on the record that, that's not an aisle, you know.
Okay. Any more questions from the public? Come on up.
Brandon Williams, 513 Amwell Road. Is this just the first phase of this development? Is there a second phase or?
No, this is it. What you see in this application is all that we have under contract. We're not expanding to any adjacent property, so that's the total sum of our proposal.
Zion to the west of it. One of the houses to the west of it. I didn't know if the rest of the wooded lots there would be, you know, up for redevelopment at some point.
It's, it's not included in the redevelopment plan, but that would be up to the town.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Motion to close public?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what we did was presented a broad overview, a factual presentation of what the applicant is proposing. We are committed to, to come back with, with our expert witnesses and in effect prove our case for the particular development, and we're prepared to do that. I think it's clear that the applicant is willing to work with your professionals, as evidenced by the fact that we're conducting meetings with your, your engineer, and we will probably be in a position to make adjustments to the application as it currently exists. And we look forward to a full hearing on this application as soon as possible.
I'm sure.
And we'd like the hearing continued, hopefully to-
What is our next?
Date certain.
Available date, David. There's a couple of things to take into consideration. One is, you'll be meeting, you, the applicant, will be meeting with the environmental commission again, what, May?
May 23rd.
May 23rd. As I noted earlier, we are in the process of putting together a redeveloper agreement. It would have to go to the township committee, obviously for their approval. As indicated earlier, the applicant does intend to revise the plans to some degree. For all that to take place in an appropriate manner, I would suggest a July meeting, which we have available July 7th and July 14th.
It's going to take the 14th.
The time of decision on this application happens to be July 14th, so we may, depending on when the board decides to schedule this, we may want to request an extension from the applicant.
On July 14th, because Gary Dean will be here, too. Yeah. Sorry, preference, counsel to that?
Yes, it would be July 14th as a available July date.
Schedule for July 14th.
Do you want to grant the extension on time of decision?
Yes, grant an extension through July 31st. The infamous extension paper.
Happens to have one. Always at the ready. Our planet. Expedite.
Therefore, what we are seeking is a motion to continue this application to July 14th, no further notice requirements, and that the applicant has granted time of decision extension at least until the 31st of July.
That's correct.
Okay. And would it be possible for you to leave those displays there, maybe for the public, that they could take those, that handouts?
That's fine.
Okay.
Have some extras of these, too.
Yes, I mean, for those that you can hand out. All right, so we have a motion for that.
So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Yes. Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hetap.
Yes.
Mr. Beccaratta.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Chairman McConaughey.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Frank, don't leave. I have any issue with that.
You can hand them out.
I don't need them.
Everybody's got one, so. Hand them out to who needs them.
Move for classes, there's a-[1767.32]